I have nothing.
Counselor Dodek.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Ron Sakamoto. The 2023 Junos are coming up. On March 11th, he'll be getting the award that I will shortly mention. So he's the 2023 recipient at the Junos for the Walt Grellis Special Achievement Award. Walt Grellis was a legendary publisher and music industry leader who co-founded the Junos 50-odd years ago. And he was also the first recipient, which was awarded to him in 2004 posthumously. Well, Ron is no stranger to awards and accolades. He's received numerous industry awards, particularly the Canadian Country Music Awards as well as the American Country Music Awards. In 2019, he received the Alberta Order of Excellence. And together with his wife Joyce Sakamoto, he's also well-known as a philanthropist in the city. I've only mentioned a few of his accomplishments. So receiving the 2023 Walter Grellis Special Achievement Award at the Junos this year is something that he is proud of and we as citizens of Lethbridge should be proud of as well. So congratulations, Ron.
Thank you very much. Counselor Campbell.
I have nothing.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you very much. A few from me. A shout-out to the children of St. Martha's School for their Take What You Need fence offered on Valentine's Day. Thank you very much for doing that. And the pieces that I was able to collect hang in my home office now where I can look at them every day. So thank you very much for doing that. Also, congratulations to the recipients of the recent Lethbridge Police Service Medal Ceremony. And thank you to all members of LPS for everything that they do in our community. And congratulations to the winners and nominees of the Lethbridge Build Region Awards of Excellence in Housing 2022. And thank you for everything you do in our community. And Mayor Higgin, did you have anything?
I do. Thank you very much, Acting Mayor. One thing I want to first of all thank Counsel Dodek here. I wanted to recognize Mr. Sakamoto as well, what a great accomplishment. And it's great to have someone like that in our community when he can be pretty much anywhere. So great for that. Last week I had the opportunity of attending the Future Food Canada Conference in Ottawa, where we had the opportunity to showcase our new Anchor Food Hub to the rest of Canada and to, you know, really promote that for future conferences, et cetera. So it was really good to be there. But while out there, I had the opportunity of going to meet with CMHC. A couple of weeks ago, here Council had put some dollars aside contingent on getting the dollars from the federal government for the Rapid Housing Initiative. And had the opportunity to sit down with CMHC to further discuss the importance of having those dollars in this next round. As we're aware, that we didn't have in the first and second round of the Rapid Housing. So it was great to be able to sit down with them and further explain the importance of housing and how we need more within our community. And it was a great time to be able to kill two birds with one stone while out in Ottawa. So that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion here for myself. Be it resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on February 21st, 2023 be adopted as presented. Madam City Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Chair. We have three items to add to this agenda. One item is urgent business. It is the 2023 Tax Auction Reserve Bids Report. And that's urgent business from last week's economic meeting on Wednesday. As you know, the publication of that agenda or this agenda was Tuesday. So that's why it's being added as urgent business. It's a time-sensitive matter. So that will be moved to today's consent agenda as item 4.3.1. Also, we have 14.2 and 14.3. They're closed verbal reports. The first one is entitled "Council Procedural Matter", and the second one is "Chamber Technology Issue." Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments with regards to those agenda additions? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Nope, that carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. And this, since Deputy Mayor Parker isn't here, I will turn this over to Counselor Carlson. Consent agenda: Be it resolved that the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same City Council meeting 0207-2023. And further be it resolved that City Council receive for information the following reports. Status of Directed Resolutions 0207-2023. And further be it resolved that City Council approve the recommendations contained within the following Standing Policy Committee reports. 4.3.1, 2023 Tax Reserve Bids. Urgent Business from February 15th, 2023 Economic Standing Policy Committee Requires Two-thirds Affirmative Vote to Add. Be it resolved that City Council sets the reserve bids for each parcel of land and designated manufactured home offered for sale at the public tax auction as provided in Attachment 2 on Thursday, April 6, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. in the Culver City Meeting Room at City Hall. And further be it resolved that City Council provide first reading to the following bylaw. Bylaw 6399 Land Use Bylaw Amendment Reed 1020, Second A Street South. And further be it resolved that City Council direct administration to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 3:00 p.m. for the following bylaw: Bylaw 6399 Land Use Bylaw Amendment Reed 1020, Second A Avenue Streets South. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you.
We're just checking that here.
Yep.
Sanchez, can you confirm that?
Yes, that is correct. It's 12A.
12A? Okay, thank you.
Look at you go.
I don't know what happened.
Thank you. Acting Mayor, I reviewed the minutes and the rest of the consent agenda. Unless my colleagues notice anything, I will call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to official business motion, item 6.1. So which one am I reading? Okay, so Counselor Middleton Hope, this motion is yours, 6.1. Term limitations for council membership on boards, commissions, or committees. I have the version that we were supplied when we got our agenda packages, but I do understand that you have a revised version. Which one would you like me to read? Okay.
I'll just speak to it. I'm actually going to request that this be deferred to the March 7th meeting. There are some revisions to this motion, in addition to which both Mayor Higgin and Counsel Parker would like to be present for the debate on this issue. They are not available today. So I'm asking that this be deferred to March 7th. And the revised motion will be provided to each member of council in advance.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Through you to the mover, if I can. I know this is going to be postponed to a future meeting. Have you had any discussion with some of the boards and commissions that you specifically mentioned in this?
Yes.
And their comments are provided?
I don't know that their comments are provided. I can certainly provide those comments.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so Counselor Middleton Hope, would you like to make a motion then to defer this?
I would.
So you're going to postpone a revised version to the March 7th council meeting?
That's correct. A revised version of the motion to is deferred to the March 7th. That's what we'll be voting on?
Just let the city clerk staff get that typed up for us? All right, so we've got that one ready to go. Okay, so be it resolved that a revised motion be postponed to the March 7th, 2023 meeting of Lethbridge City Council. Counselor Middleton Hope.
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Up next, we have a motion from Mayor Higgin. Official Business Motion 6.2 Provincial Advocacy Functional Planning Study and Preliminary Design for the Third River Crossing. Whereas the city voted 60.4% in favor of the question on the ballot during the 2021 municipal election, that City Council should approve plans to construct a third bridge prior to 2030 as a municipal capital project priority. Whereas City Council received a report on the third bridge crossing at its meeting on October 11th, 2022, concluding that preliminary traffic volume suggests that the third river crossing may be needed sometime between 2030 and 2040. Whereas City Council approved funding in principle as part of the 2022-2031 Capital Improvement Program for the preliminary design of the Chinook Trail River Crossing C-21 scheduled for 2027. And whereas any future government, federal, or provincial funding becomes available for this project, that the city be in a state of readiness to receive the funding. Therefore be it resolved, council authorize the mayor to write letters to the provincial and federal governments requesting funding for the functional planning study and preliminary design for the proposed Third River Crossing Chinook Trail River Crossing. Mayor Higgin.
Thank you, and I won't repeat kind of what's already in the resolution there. That it kind of puts a little bit of an end, I guess, to the question that was asked on the ballot at the election with 60.4% in favor of constructing a third bridge. Now, that was a very, very open question, and I will agree with, I'm sure, many of my colleagues that, for one thing, I would do not want to burden taxpayers with this. And so any way we can get funding from other levels of government to put us to a point of shovel-ready, I just wanted to make sure that we are in the position to do that. And so I wanted to have a letter drafted as it states there and to supply to the provincial government and the federal government to help with the cost for this functional study for the Third River Crossing.
Thank you very much, Mayor Higgin. We have some questions lining up in the queue. Counselor Dodek. Oh, he's lining up for debate. Counselor Middleton Hope.
Just the, I guess, one question, and then I will line up for debate. The question in the motion indicates that City Council approve funding. That's completely wide open. What type of funding? How much are we being asked to consider?
That is in the capital improvement. This is now in principle, is in the second half of the CIP. So that is not, the funding hasn't, a dollar amount has not been put forward. So that's not changing at all. That is already in the CIP for that time, the second half of this, of the CIP. So the 2022 to 2031.
Okay.
No funding has been designated yet.
I can imagine. Thank you, your worship. I'll stay in the queue for debate.
Hey, do I have any other questions at all? No? Okay. Mayor Higgin, did you want to open for debate, or was that your opening?
I'd be by opening. I'll wait to close.
Okay, Counselor Dodek for debate.
Yes, thank you. I understand this official business motion to be, to write letters asking for money from the province and feds with respect to the study, just as the motion says. But I just wanted to also remind everyone that I had submitted an inquiry back in December 2nd of 2021, and the response was received on December 14th, 2021. And the purpose of that inquiry was to try to figure out what the tax burden would be on the citizens based on the cost of a bridge, being anywhere between $200 million and $300 million. The question that was submitted to the electorate in 2021 estimated the cost of the bridge to be about between $175 to $200 million. So if we assume that the city of Lethbridge bears the entire burden of paying for the bridge and using the factual situations that we used at the time and using the cost of $200 million, there was a calculated at 10-year loan repayment at 3% interest rate, which I suspect would be higher now based on what's been going on. But at least the response at that time was that it would involve a tax increase of 14.5% per year to pay off that loan at that rate, which would be the average tax increase or property tax change would be $343 per year simply to fund the loan for the payment of the bridge, assuming the numbers that I've used. I'm only bringing, I'm not going to go through the other numbers, but I just wanted to say that I will support the resolution because it is requesting money from other orders of government. But I just wanted to make it clear that the cost associated if the city had to 100% fund this bridge would be significant to the nth degree. Thank you.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, and I appreciate this being brought forward. However, I simply don't have enough information in regards to what the costs are going to be. I appreciate Counsel Dodek bringing forward information that was provided more than a year and a half ago, I guess. But I don't think that that's been renewed. We've had some significant economic changes and forecasts that have certainly changed in the last year and a half. I think those numbers would have to be revisited. And I see nothing in terms of what alternatives might be viewed rather than going with a third bridge, what the city might consider in terms of economic development on the west side to obfuscate having to create a third bridge. So I'm not going to support this.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. If you'll permit a question just arising from Counsel Middleton Hope's.
Yep.
Then through you to City Manager or designate. The costs have changed. I believe when we first contemplated this in 2018, the cost was around $5 million. In the most recent CIP, that was at $4 million. I'm assuming it's changed again in light of some of the comments from Counselors Dodek and Middleton Hope. Do we have any idea what we'll be asking for in this? It's better to go with an actual amount than, well, we don't know.
Through the Acting Mayor to Counsel Carlson. In regards to this, I might, seeing Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Jewell conversing over there. I'm not quite sure what the difference would be in the preliminary study, but I would sense it probably has changed since the last time we did this.
Can quickly chip in, we don't have the numbers in front of us. I was talking to Mr. Jewell, but this assessment, the functional planning plus preliminary design also includes environmental assessments of the third bridge and all the implications of most likely the cost that we had a couple of years ago is going to be, just to give a number, 30%, 40% more of what it was at that time. So certainly, depending on the current considerations, could be more than that, yes.
So we don't really know what we'd be asking for right now?
We will need to go back again and try to do a high-level estimate, like Mr. Wilson explained before at class 10, where we have a lot of uncertainties to come to the best scenario that we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Acting Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in for debate? Counselor Dodek.
I just have a question to the mover. Mayor Higgin, having heard the question of Counsel Carlson and the response from Mr. Sanchez with respect to the increased cost of the functional study when compared to the CIP estimate, I was just wondering if perhaps you might consider deferring this resolution for a couple of weeks to see if we could get at least a response so that, in fact, we could put a number in the resolution, even if it is an estimate, so something along the lines of $4 million or $5 million, or whatever the number might be, so that at least you would have something concrete to be able to write to the provincial and federal government should you get the votes to have this resolution passed. What are your thoughts on that, if you don't mind?
Thank you so much for the question. As you noticed, I didn't have a dollar amount for reasons that were already stated. We don't know what the costs are going to be, as we did years and years ago when we first brought this forward. It changes continually. And so in talking to some of my other colleagues throughout the province, there hasn't been a request for dollars, actually, when it does go there for this exact reason. It's to do the design in the study. And then my thought would be, as listening to what my other colleagues have done throughout the provinces, the province will come back and state, you know, what are these costs going to be? It gets the ball rolling. And I think the biggest part is that this is part of the CIP that we've heard it's changed from $5 million, $4 million, whatever that dollar amount. That's currently on taxation if this is approved with the future CIP. And so for that reason, I just want to make sure that it's not burdened on the taxpayer. And when I say that, dollars only come from one pocket. We know that, right? But at least it's we're getting our portion back to our community by having the provincial government, the federal government, if, you know, this does pass and gets to them, that those dollars would come from those funds rather than from the local taxation. So, yeah, for that reason, I just, I left that open because I've seen before another ask similar to the province that there was not a dollar amount that is actually asked for.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. If I can continue on questions, since we seem to be down there now. I'll through you to the mover, Mayor Higgin. This project was not slated to start until 2027. And I'm just, and so I don't even think it's actually been approved. It's sort of a placeholder. So I'm, I'm just struggling how you go to the province with an unapproved project. So I'm, I just have some concerns around it not being approved, yet we're asking for the money. I don't know if you can answer that, or if City Manager or designate has some advice on how best to proceed?
I could start, and if City Manager wants to continue. We, oh, sorry, did he start speaking? Sorry, I didn't hear.
No, go ahead, Mayor Higgin.
Okay. No, it is in our CIP. It is in the CIP, but again, there's no dollars. It's in principle, so there has been discussion on that. And that's where the dollars came forward here, you know, the $5 million, $4 million, those dollars that were set there. So, yeah, definitely, it's, as far as I know, or what I understand, it is in the CIP, but we do not have where we're going to get those dollars from. That would be discussed at the future CIP, obviously, for the second half of the 10-year plan.
Mr. Matthews.
Through the Acting Mayor to members of councils, just for clarification on this. So it is in the CIP. It's in the portion of the CIP we would classify as a forecast that the last, well, 2027 onwards is not in the approved amounts of the CIP that council's approved. So if council remembers last year, the projects up to 2026, most of the projects up to 2026 were approved. There's a few that we didn't because of some of the funding. So this particular one is not within the approved portion of the CIP. It's within the forecasted starting. And then, of course, just one thing I'll mention as well, too. This also would be conditional on the Transportation Master Plan and some of the work inside of there. And I don't know if Mr. Sanchez would also speak to that.
You're right, this is part of the Transportation Master Plan. And the other, the other thing that we might need to consider is that functional plans, ideally, we try to do those three years at the most before construction starts. Then you move to a detailed design, and detailed design is just before RFP. And at this point, the functional, this work was supposed to be happening in 2027. So it's still four years down the road. It could be done, but again, there is a risk that when we get closer to doing construction and then we need to do another preliminary design or detailed design, the numbers are not going to be good. So we are still far away from that construction. So that's a risk we also need to consider.
Thank you very much. Was there anybody else in for debate? Counselor Middleton Hope.
Just to follow up on Counsel Dodek's question to the mayor. Or so, your worship, are you prepared to defer this for, to acquire more information to a further, I guess, to a future council meeting? Or do you want to deal with this today?
I'd like to deal with this today for a couple of reasons. One in particular is that I know that there's funding that is available, not that we're going to get it, with how prosperous lately with some of these cash flows from, you know, the surpluses that have come from a provincial point of view. And so it's something I definitely want to continue with today. I do want to, I'm going to be going up to the budget here next week. I do want to take this in hand, up to, you know, in person and deliver this if it is passed. And again, in asking about how the costs fluctuate and to Mr. Sanchez's point, that they do, they do these out and they will put in that, you know what? It's been 30%, 40% over the last few years. This is taken into account, and it's not that they're going to turn around and give the dollars right now. We know that this is going to take some time, but it just gets it on the table of those that need, that we hoped will have the funding available. So for that reason, I do want to still continue with it today.
Counselor Dodek.
Bearing that in mind, would you be prepared to consider a friendly resolution? I'll explain why in a second, why I'm proposing this. In the third line, where it says "the proposed Third River Crossing", I would suggest you put in "for a proposed Third River Crossing" and put a period after the word "crossing", so you're not identifying the location. And the reason I'm saying that is if you want to have a resolution in your pocket and the ability to write a letter, it gives you some flexibility in case the province, the feds or any combination thereof start talking about perhaps having it as a part of a ring road versus committing yourself to a very specific location. So what it does, it tells you we're still interested in doing a functional planning study for a Third River Crossing, but leaving it open for the other orders of government to talk potential locations that are different than the ones that we've already considered. So I would ask that you consider that as a proposal and let me know what you think.
I 100% agree with that, Counsel Dodek, just for the mere fact, you're right. A River Crossing, because in the past, I know when I've discussed this before, I've thought of other ways, as you had mentioned, of a ring road. And, you know, governments love to have, other levels of government love to have more regional infrastructure. So this would definitely tie into that. So I would definitely be happy to make that change.
Counselor Carlson.
Just to confirm, are we in debate or questions now?
We're going, we're back at questions.
Okay, so mine's for debate. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Carlson is waiting for debate. Do we have any other questions before I take us to debate and Counselor Dodek takes us back to questions? We're still, we're back to questions. Yeah, exactly. It is debatable. Do we have the change of the resolution and preliminary design for a proposed Third River Crossing? Mayor Higgin, can you see that?
I can. Let me just see here. Yes, perfect.
All right. Any other questions? Going once, twice, I'm not going back, three times, no. Mayor Higgin, would you like to reopen for debate, or are you good to go?
No, I'm good to close.
Okay, Counselor Carlson for debate.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. As I've been listening to my colleagues and as I've read through everything, I've hemmed and hawed on which way to fall on this. I see the importance of going to the other orders of government and asking them if they'd be willing to pay them. We'd at least know if they have a hand in this. And it'd be a way, as the mayor said, of closing this if they choose not to promote it. But I also know we have a lot more significant requests that we should be making of the provincial and federal governments, things that are higher in need in our community, in my mind. And I always worry when you go to the well once, if you go back again, where the difficulty is. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote against it because I think there's other places we should be doing more advocacy than this, though I do respect that this is an important way to close the circle.
Thank you very much, Counselor Carlson. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Counselor Carlson beat me to the punch. I would like to support this, but right now, I'm, because we don't have all our ducks in a row and we don't even know what. we don't even know what really we'd be asking for. I do appreciate the modification to A proposed rather than D, but that, again, even opens up greater uncertainty in what we're actually asking for. We do have other priorities that are in front of us at this moment, and I think maybe that should be our focus. But with this one, even though it would be nice to get some dollars, until I know what dollars I'm asking for and what level of commitment, and when we're ready to start, I think it might be shooting ourselves in the foot to start asking for things that we have too many uncertainties on. So I appreciate it coming forward, but I won't be supporting it at this time.
Councillor Dodak?
I will be supporting it. Anyone can bring a resolution at any time if they think there are other priorities that need to be advocated on behalf of. We shouldn't not vote against something simply because there is something out there that we think might have a higher priority. This simply gives the mayor an opportunity to have a conversation with the federal government and the provincial government. And I do appreciate the fact that it doesn't have a number in it, but that is something for discussion, because if there's any interest shown in it, as the mayor has pointed out, they'll ask, well, how much you're looking for? And at the very least, he can go back to the CIP and give at least an estimate of what the actual functional planning study was assessed at back then. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in for debates? Councillor Croson, your hand is still up?
Sorry, just an oversight.
Thank you very much. I will be supporting this. What we are looking for is the mayor to write letters and to start lobbying our provincial and federal governments for a request of funding. It's not going forward with the actual construction, but asking for some preliminary work to be funded by the province and the feds. It also provides a good regional option, as we just saw with the change in the motion. So I will be supporting this. Councillor, or Mayor Higgin to close, please?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. And thank you very much for the questions and the debate, and then the questions, and then the further debate. Appreciate that. You know, it's something that is always been, I mean, as long as I've been on council, and I'm sure if councillor Park was there and councillor Dodak, it seems to always be the conversation that comes up, is this third bridge. And I'm absolutely, and I want to make sure that, I can't emphasize this enough, I guess, that I'm not in favor of burdening the taxpayer this 13% or whatever this number comes back, which could be higher. So there's any opportunity we get to ask for additional funding to offset those dollars, I'm definitely there to do that. And as was mentioned before, councillor Dodak, I don't want to focus on an item that we need. I want to focus on a lot of items that our community needs. And so with that, we need to be advocating on all different levels. If it's from housing, if it's from bridging, if it's from social service dollars, any of this, I want to make sure we're on top of it for everything and not putting all of our aics in one basket. And so for that reason, I would ask council support. There's no dollars that are attached to this, and I would appreciate your support.
Question's been called. All in favor? Let's do a roll call. Madam City Clerk? Councillor Carlson?
Opposed.
Councillor Croson?
Opposed.
Councillor Dodak?
In favor.
Councillor Middleton Hope?
Opposed.
Councillor Palladino?
In favor.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
Favor.
Mayor Higgin?
In favor.
Councillor Campbell?
In favor.
Carries five, two, three. Thank you very much for that. Do we have council updates? Do we have any updates from council?
It's cold.
It is cold. And your hands are sore? Jeff's house is leaking? All right. Moving on, we have our closed meeting. Notice there's a motion here. So, from councillor Palladino, item 14.4, development matter. Be it resolved that City Council direct administration to proceed with the confidential direction provided in closed session, and further be it resolved that City Council direct at the closed meeting reports, documents and discussions with respect to the development matter remain confidential pursuant to sections 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations, and 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Councillor Palladino.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? That carries. And I have an omnibus motion, 14.2 and 14.3, from councillor Middleton Hope. Closed meeting. Be it resolved that council direct the closed meeting discussions with respect to meetings through electronic means, verbal and technological issues. Update verbal, remain confidential pursuant to section 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Councillor Middleton Hope?
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? I have one opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That is our meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.